Welcome to our executive meeting. Can I just remind you, please, we're not expecting a far alarm this evening. But if for any reason there is, can I ask that you all exit by the fire exit either over there or here and assemble outside Waitrose so we can take a roll call and then we know that everyone is safely accounted for. Right, I'm informed by Mrs McQuillan that we have no informal questions, is that correct? Right, in that case, moving to our first item of the main agenda, which is the minutes of the special meeting, which was the one held on the 24th of May 2016, and the meeting that was also held on the 7th of June, which have been laid on the table, can I take it that those minutes are agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you, I will sign those after this meeting. Can we move to apologies for absence?
Thank you Leader, we have received apologies from councillor Jed Hall.
Thank you, any declarations of interest?
Love received Leader.
Members, any declarations of interest? Moving to the next item on the agenda, which is formal questions from members of the public. I'll start with our first question, which is from Mr Charles Orange.
That's right. Hello, good evening councillors, good evening Chairman. My question, my written question is about the flawed consultation which you've carried out last, in 2014. And I've said in the question, I note that a key piece of evidence presented for the inclusion of Dunsfold-Airfield in the draft local plan is the flawed 2014 consultation. Response to this was less than 4% of the population of Waverley, which had 80% in favour of Dunsfold-Airfield. In contrast, the current public consultation on the application for 1800 houses at Dunsfold has 84% of respondents objecting to the development, and I think the numbers are going up from 1700 to 1800, something like that. Will the executive confirm that the more recent consultation data, which is a substantial number too, will be included in the plan to show a balanced and more coherent view? And I'd have emailed you other with other concerns, but I want to be brief, so I don't expect you to answer those now. Thank you Chairman or Chair.
Mr Orange, thank you. Obviously, the council fully appreciates that the planning application for Dunsfold aerodrome sites attracted a considerable amount of local interest. These comments will be taken into account in the consideration of the planning application. We do not think that it would be appropriate for the local plan to actually refer to comments for a number of reasons. Firstly, the comments relate to a particular development proposal, and they're actually not made in the context of the borough-wide local plan. And secondly, many other applications in Waverley have also attracted an awful lot of local interest, and it would not therefore be appropriate to single out the responses made to this specific application. Thank you for your question. I'll now move to a question that we've had from Mr Bob Lees, and I understand Mr Lees can't be present this evening, but I'll take his actual question as read. Under the circumstances, he's actually asked if we could please read out the answer so that he's able to pick that up through the webcast. And my answer to him is that a thorough proof reading of the draft local plan will be made before it is published to rectify any errors and inconsistencies. Mr Lees has referred particularly to the status of AGLV and the AONB, and we're not arguing that the AGLV has the same status as the AONB. We do recognise the value of the AONB as a national landscape designation, but just to be clear, policy RE3, brackets, little one, little one, close brackets, only states that the same principles will apply in the AGLV. However, one of the changes that we are proposing before the plan is published is to amend the text to clarify that the AGLV designation does not carry as much weight as the AONB designation. And I hope that is very clear for Mr Lees. Moving on, I have, I understand, another formal question, sorry, from Mr Chris Britton.
Thank you Madam Chairman, I'd just like to explain the context of my question, which was given in full in my letter, but it doesn't seem to have been reproduced in the agenda papers. But briefly, I think councillors are well aware now of two main things that have prompted my question. One is that in the draft local plan, something like 45% of all housing development proposed in the borough is to be placed in the Cranley, Dunsfold and Oldfold area. The second factual matter that has come to the attention of councillors in the last two weeks are the two key transport reports, the Surrey County Council Strategic Highways Assessment Report and Mot McDonald's Stage 4 Report. And it's very interesting reading those in detail. I'm not convinced that officers are reading these documents, except very selectively, because these documents give very, very clear indications of the impact of transport if the development in the Cranley, Dunsfold and Oldfold area goes ahead. And indeed, the Mot McDonald's report indicates that that is the least sustainable of all the development areas within the borough, on 10 heat maps that are produced in that report. So I would ask councillors to bear that in mind. So my question is, what changes to the draft local plan will the executive make to ensure that the cumulative impacts of adopting the proposed very large housing target figure are not disproportionately placed in the south-east of the borough, where infrastructure and especially transport links are known and acknowledged to be poor? And no major strategic plans are set out for funded improvements which must be necessary to make such development sustainable? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Britton. In answer to your question, the justification for the proposed distribution of development across the borough is set out in the spatial strategy chapter of the local plan. And before that plan is published, and in response to a number of comments that have come in from the Joint Overview and Scrutiny Committee on the same matter, a further explanation will be added. In so far as infrastructure is concerned, we fully acknowledge the importance of securing improvements, including the highways network, in order to mitigate the impacts of new development. You may be aware, for example, that the council has secured infrastructure contributions from the developers of the large sites around Cranley that have received planning permission. When the community infrastructure levy charging schedule is adopted, this can also be used to ensure that we direct funds to meet the cumulative infrastructure needs of developments. The council will also still be able to secure contributions through Section 106 agreements on individual developments that generate a need for new or improved infrastructure, such as Dunsfold Aerodrome. Where appropriate, the plan will also seek to ensure that larger strategic sites are developed in a phased manner, with appropriate levels of infrastructure delivered at each stage. Right, moving on to item five of the agenda, which is the executive forward programme. Executive colleagues, the programme can be found on pages 13 to 18 of your agenda. Have you any comments, please? May I take it that you're all happy with that and the programme as is before you?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item six, which is the Budget Management Report, pages 19 to 26. I'll just sum that up, councillor Hall, as we all know, is in much sunnier climes this week. And so this is the first budget management report for the fiscal year 2016-17, and the report provides a forecast outturn against budget incorporating all known risks and mitigating actions. At this point, it has been identified that the building control service income is under pressure from independent approved inspectors and reduced staffing due to turnover. So there is actually noted a shortfall in income of £88,000 forecast for the year. Waste recycling bins are provided free of charge to new homes in the borough, and the cost is usually covered from planning infrastructure contributions, which ceased last year, and they were replaced by the community infrastructure levy, which comes in in 2017. So there is therefore a one-off £25,000 cost for bins required to be funded from this year from the repairs and renewals fund. This is recommendation one. The report then covers some areas of uncertainty where it is too early to quantify a forecast, but I would ask colleagues that you note the following issues. In excess of £500,000 of investment income is earned from our treasury management activity, and in the last week, the Bank of England has indicated a possible reduction in the base rate. This will impact upon our overall income achievement. The report also covers the risks to income from car parking and development control due to seasonality. There's a summary of the general fund capital programme for you to see, and the table there shows the approved 2016-17 budget of £3,150,000 as per the budget book, and previous year capital carry forward of £4,134,000. There is one recommendation included, which is to use £40,000 from the urgent schemes budget to fund development consultancy on Brightwell. From the housing revenue account, which is delivering within budget, it is to be noted that there are potential cost pressures on the responsive repairs budget, resulting from improved repair lead times which have reduced the backlog of work. However, the HRA core capital budget includes one recommendation to via budget to cover the replacement of community boiler system in the sheltered blocks and Abbey Court. There's a £631,000 of stock remodelling budget being declared as an underspend, which results from two projects no longer going ahead. And finally, within the HRA new build programme, a £44,000 vehement is requested to cover additional costs on the lady mead and hull mead scheme. In addition to the new build programme, an allocation of £200,000 is requested to bring forward demolition and site assembly works on Site D. Colleagues, recommendations are on your agenda, on page four, there are recommendations one to five. Any comments at all on those, or are they agreed? Thank you. Moving to item seven, which is treasury management. Again, the purpose of item seven, which is the treasury management report, is simply to summarise Waverley's treasury management activities during the past fiscal year 2015-16. Total external investments held on the 31st of March 2016 were £51.1 million, which compares closely with £51.5 million held on the 31st of March in the previous year 2015. The actual interest receipts outturn was £644,000 compared to a budget of £500,000, achieving an average rate of return of 0.77% compared to 0.55% last year. All investing activity fully complied with the Prudential Code and Strategy approved by council in February of 2015. So that is the report to you for your review. Any questions or queries? No? Kazra Edwards.
Thank you Leader, I'd like to express my thanks to the team for their excellent investment performance. It's been very difficult with such low interest rates, and well done to all concerned. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Edwards. Any other comments? Thank you, there is therefore one recommendation which can be found at the bottom of page four of your agenda. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
We now move to item eight, which is the Waverley Borough Council Local Plan Part One, which is strategic policies and sites. You have a very comprehensive report before you, I'm aware that we have a number of speakers, so can I invite the speakers to speak first, starting, if I may, with councillor Frost, who I understand will be presenting the comments from the Joint Overview and Scrutiny Committee. Thank you councillor Frost.
Thank you very much indeed Leader for inviting me to present the observations at the executive meeting. As you probably know, we took the plan in two parts. We found that we couldn't get through the highways part, as well as the Part One of the plan, strategic policies and sites, in one evening. And we're very pleased that we did that, because we were able to invite the officer from Surrey, who put together the Surrey part of the plan, and also the officer from Mot McDonald, and they actually threw some light on the whole subject. Because it's a very technical document, the highway document, and we found it quite difficult, but we were able to work our way through it. If I can just say, there were a number of general requests made by the committee, and then I'd like to go on, if I may, to the points that we would ask you to merit consideration as the executive. First of all, policy AHN3, housing types and size, we felt the definition of older people should be included, that was a comment by the committee. I think the age by the government is 50, most of us wouldn't consider ourselves old at 50. And then policy TD1, townscape and design, we really would like you, the officers, to check the phrasing of paragraph three relating to town and village design statements and neighbourhood plans to ensure that it is clearly demonstrates the council's support for both the preparation of the plans and their delivery, they are both important documents. Ensure that the comments on page nine relating to the Dunsfold Aerodrome site and the need for appropriate transport mitigation are consistent within section 18. And then section 18, strategic sites, officers to check the calculation of numbers of homes that would be forthcoming from the sites in this section. And then we would like them to check the housing trajectory. But the points that they would like raised and asked for consideration by the executive is to include a paragraph in the spatial strategy relating to the housing market assessment that explains why it is not possible to match the distribution of homes across the borough with the housing need, especially in terms of affordable housing. They expressed concern about the air quality in certain traffic hotspots. Then they wanted the request for an up-to-date infrastructure delivery plan, part one talks about it, but none of us have seen it. And they felt that they would, because infrastructure was a large part of our evening, they would like to see that, because of the concerns raised relating to infrastructure and mitigation measures. The need to infill sites in rural areas to provide a limited number of affordable homes, especially when it is only possible to deliver smaller developments in these areas, which would be below the threshold, so they would like that looked at. Members agree that a strategic view was needed for areas such as Cranley, where there was a potential cumulative impact from a number of developments coming forward, so that mitigation measures could be informed. It was suggested by a member that it was an inevitable consequence of growth that roads would get more congested without highway improvements. There was a comment about the impact of traffic on rural roads, particularly in the Dunsfold area, and we felt that we needed to do that, look at that. There was also a comment about the impact of rerouting of longer trips when the Hindhead Tunnel is closed, and that happens more and more. And the situation we find ourselves in is that traffic comes off at the A325 and goes right the way through Farnham, and nothing was taken into account to do with that. So there were a number of things, and I won't go through them in detail, but we did feel that the promotion of the Recession Relief Road, a particular interest of mine, in conjunction with Hampshire County Council, was omitted from the plan. Then we went on to talk about the highway implications, and part of the problem we have with that is that this is a strategic plan over a number of years. It is not all going to happen tomorrow, and there is a tendency to think that with all of this, tomorrow we will suddenly have 3,000 or however many it is, houses built. That is not going to happen. But there are two issues, one is the strategic issue of roads, which is addressed in the two highway reports, and then you come down to the individual planning applications relating to those definite areas. And it is with those planning applications that members have an opportunity to talk about the problems in that area. But we need to do that before the agreement is reached with the developer. So somehow we need to set up a system that if we're going to build, I don't know, 200 houses in Coxbridge, in Farnham, we need to actually, local members need to look at what the proposals are, so that they can talk about the impact before officers reach a contractual agreement with the developers. Because it is at that stage that we can impact and affect what we're doing. We can't do much about the A3, that is a let bid or a coast-to-coast bid, but we do have an influence on what happens in an individual planning application. That we're not addressing, and we need to address that. So that's a very quick run-through, I'm afraid Leader, but I'd like to thank the officers, particularly Emma, who did some really quite fulsome notes, and the officers who supported us that evening. We had the portfolio holder there, we had councillor Else there, and that was very helpful. But I think members are concerned about the individual applications and the impact and the cumulative effect that is going to have, but that has to be taken at planning application stage, and that was made very clear by the planning officers. So if anybody who was there that evening, I've got it wrong, please say when it's your turn to speak. But if that's all right Leader, that is the report that I'm presenting to you on behalf of the Joint Overview and Scrutiny Committee.
Thank you councillor Frost, and thank you both to officers, yourself and your vice-chair, and everyone who took part in those meetings. I know I was at the part of the first one, and they were lengthy meetings, but I think it was fair to say that the plan and the proposals were very, very thoroughly reviewed. And certainly, there are a number of comments that have come back, which will be fed into the plan and actually used. And I think your point, which we really need to make sure that members and also our wider residents are really aware of here, is the main point that you've highlighted, in that we have a strategy and we have a plan, but we also need to be very well aware and focus on the fact that we need to really make sure we're working collaboratively on the individual applications when they do come in. And I might, I'll turn if I may to Mrs Sims, sorry to put you on the spot so early in the evening, Mrs Sims, but I think, picking up the comments from Mrs Frost, I know she's made a number of comments, but this is something that has come in repeatedly from a number of members, and I know other members who've been to see me have also sort of made this point. So can we, I know obviously we do have a process, but can we look at sort of some, you know, a system that is even more robust to really ensure that this does happen, and we've got all the right people talking to each other at the right time in this process, given how crucial it is for the right level and the right, and the appropriate delivery of new homes? Thank you.
Thank you Leader. I think probably the key point to make, picking up councillor Frost's point, is that the pre-application stage of any planning application is absolutely crucial in terms of getting the right people in place to discuss the opportunities for the site, including the applicant's aspirations, but also the community's aspirations. And our pre-application process is very well developed. Over the last few years, we've developed a very good technique where we contact the ward members and we invite them to share with us on a, without prejudice basis, what their concerns and issues may be in relation to a site. But as we develop this process, it's the opportunity to flag up very early in the process, before decisions are made by the applicant about the quantum and style of the development, to understand what the community expects, and particularly those infrastructure matters which you've made reference to. So we take the point entirely, and we can improve on the system we've already got to pick that up. Thank you very much Leader.
Thank you Mrs Sims. Hopefully that was helpful to all members who are here, as well as observers this evening. But as I say, there are a number of points that you've raised, but I know that is something that, you know, is absolutely crucial, that we really do continue to work on that. So thank you for your comments, and thank you for taking the time to come and address us this evening, it is very much appreciated. Thank you, that would be lovely, thanks, thank you. Moving to our next speaker, I ask councillor Mulliner, please.
Mindful of what I mentioned to you before, and could I defer my place to councillor Gray and then speak afterwards?
Right. In that case councillor Gray.
Thank you Leader. I think that's increased expectations, hasn't it? My comments are about the strategic plan and the concerns I have about the right balance in that document and the right tone in it. The local plan is so important to the people of Waverley and the businesses within, it sets the scene for the next 15 years or so, and can change forever the landscape of our borough. We need houses, but we also have a responsibility for those who already live here. 30% of the borough's population lives outside of the main four settlements area and is very rural in nature, tranquil and attractive to those who choose to live there. I represent a rural part of Waverley, but I also share with others a responsibility for the borough as a whole, to ensure this plan is inclusive and balances the needs of all. Farnham and the surrounding areas undoubtedly have the most congested roads, and Gudleming and Hazelmead have many constraints. We have policies within the document which seek to build only on the most sustainable sites. I think it's been said before tonight that the Mot report describes Dunsfold Aerodrome as the least sustainable in transport turns. Cranley and the A281 corridor have no rail, limited bus and no choice of trunk roads, and is unique in its village nature. Cranley Village, although one of the four settlements, is still a village and is surrounded by villagers who rely on Cranley for leisure, culture and a broad range of regular and daily needs. My specific- My specific concerns go back to the fact that we're allocating 45% of our new housing on the Cranley area in the A281 corridor. Cynically, people say solely because a developer has offered a so-called Brownfield site for housing on a massive scale. The question is, is this building in a sustainable location? If we follow this plan, we will add some 70% to the population of the Cranley and surrounding area. Seventy per cent growth, but the majority of this will not directly contribute to the essential infrastructure as needed. Much infrastructure is needed in Cranley and the areas around currently to cope with the growth that we've had from current applications. And Cranley and the area around are going to see an additional 3,000 people without the Dunstfold aerodrome settlement of 5,000. If we adopt this plan, the B and minor roads of the A281 corridor will see traffics rising by 30% plus. Plus, we risk the safety and disruption to rural life on these roads. Not only these roads, but also those leading to Godleming, to Milford, to Chittingfold, to Whitley will be affected. I have concerns that the growth is understated by traffic volume that's missing from the assessments. I've raised these concerns, and I'm sure they'll be taken into account as we progress with the document. I'd also have concerns that we're assured that a set of traffic lights in Bramley will mitigate the surge of traffic of cars, vans, HGVs, and yet, we're told, it'll have little detriment to air quality and the safety of Bramley residents. Forty-five per cent of houses allocated, 70% increase in population around Cranley, and a severe impact on our B and minor roads. I ask that the executive consider their justification for these and that they go back and look at alternatives that have been dismissed and make sure they reconsidered. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gray. Can I move now to councillor Mulliner?
Thank you, Leader. Councillor Gray has indeed commented on a couple of points, so I won't repeat it. My main request is that, in supporting what the Joint Overview and Scrutiny Committee said, we do adopt a slightly more cautious tone in relation to Dunstfold. It's perfectly proper to want to develop there, we do need the homes, but I think we need to recognise that whether we can do what we want will ultimately probably be decided by the inspector at the examination in public. We're in the unusual position of relying for over 25% of our OAN on a single site, which was refused on appeal to the Secretary of State partly because of transport unsustainability, and that was in the comparatively recent past of 2009. Things may not have got much worse, but they certainly haven't gotten any better, and it would be difficult to see, given the fact that Cranley is now slated to have 1,500 more houses, that the inspector would not be interested in the cumulative effect. In that respect, I don't agree with the officers that that's only a matter for an individual application. I think he will be expected to look at the combined impact. The other issue which councillor Gray touched on is, of course, the work we are doing on the health and safety aspects of putting such a large development, which includes a very large amount of industrial development with its consequent cause of extra HGV trips onto minor roads, and we don't yet know what the outcome of that work will be. But again, I think it emphasises that being slightly more cautious about Dunstfold would be a good idea. Lastly, the point which I think does merit quite a bit of attention is whether we can be so sure that nothing that is proposed will not have a severe residual cumulative impact on the highway system. I have spoken to Mike Green at Surrey, and indeed, but the purpose was just to find out where the change in tone from Surrey, which they advertised to us as members last year, came from. That was, if you like, the congestion is not so bad really point, that if you already have congestion, a bit more will not be regarded as a severe impact. He actually stopped me and said, no, you've given too simple a statement. We differentiate between those locations which do have alternative transport modes, train, bus, cycling, walking. And there, you're right, we did say, and that's our view as the Highway Authority, not given to us by any higher authority, that increased congestion on its own is unlikely to give rise to a finding of a severe impact. But there are other locations, of which Dunstfold is an example, where you don't have the same access to alternative modes of transport. And that, of course, is the issue we've been grappling with ever since 2008. And it's very hard to see in what the applicants' consultants have put forward anything that is even as ambitious as was put forward in 2008. If one looks at it coldly, you would say that there's more likely to be congestion arising from Dunstfold under the current proposals than there was then. And I make the point, not because I have a personal stake in the matter, that I think we can expect this to be very vigorously proposed to the inspector, and we should be prepared that for all our wishes, we might not get our way. Thank you.
Councillor Mulliner, thank you. I'll take all the speakers and then invite the portfolio holder. Can I have councillor Seaborn?
Thank you, Leader. Members of the executive will probably not be surprised to learn that most residents of Bramley, Busbridge and Hascombe are not supportive of sections of Part One of the draft local plan. While there is resignation to the need to build more houses, the concerns relate more to what is missing from the plan than to what it contains. So I've got three simple questions for colleagues, which I think have been partly covered already, but they are quick, so I'll go ahead with them. Firstly, and this reiterates comments from councillor Frost, when will members get to see the updated infrastructure delivery plan that should underpin this local plan? The 2012 delivery plan and the 2014 update are completely out of date with respect to the number of houses that are now expected. Secondly, does the executive consider it acceptable to move forward, given the limited amount of road traffic safety studies that have been undertaken? This is particularly important in the context of the Surrey Strategic Highways Assessment, which flags in several places that increased traffic on the minor roads in the south-east of the borough will be a consequence of the plan, and yet no safety assessment of this outcome has yet been presented. And thirdly, in putting the local plan forward to council, does the executive consider that the evidence cited in the plan to cover air quality management is adequate, given the growing level of concern about the impact of particulates on health and the fact that Waverley's air quality management plan dates from 2008 and predates the important Public Health England study published in 2014? I recognise that Waverley issues annual air quality reports, but the plan does not reference them. Thank you, Leader.
Councillor Seaborn, thank you. Councillor Byam.
Thank you, Leader. Well, as has been expressed by one of the public speakers and my colleagues before me, and I won't go into any of that at all, we have problems with regard to infrastructure. We talk about getting infrastructure contributions, it's always difficult to get the right amount, it's also difficult to try to get cooperation and collection of infrastructure contributions that deal with the problems that we have. It's too big a problem for too many different applications, and we appear not to be able to lump them all together, to get them all into a room and ask them to make their contributions to any specific area. The one area we never seem to talk about is the possibility of using the new homes bonus. If we're getting money for all the new homes, should that not be spent on the areas and infrastructure that we need in the areas that those properties are being built? Is that ever been considered, and could it now be considered if not so? Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Byam. Councillor Adams, would you like to come in at that point, any of the points raised?
Yes. Thank you, Leader. Perhaps though, first you might like to make a comment on that last point that councillor Byam made. I think it's more of a financial issue than a planning issue.
It's a very, it's a very fair point, and at the moment, we do know that certainly for the next three, four years at least, we still have new homes bonus, so that's certainly something that we can ask officers to actually look at again as well. I know, just to pick up on a couple of the other points that some of the members made, and then I'll let councillor Adams come back in. You talked about the infrastructure delivery plan, which is in the process of being compiled, and what we will do is make sure that a draft of that, which does form a key part of the, of that part of the plan, will be circulated to members so that you can, you can obviously have that, that's not a problem at all. In answer to the point raised again by several of you, including councillor Mulliner, just to be absolutely clear, we have now commissioned a report to look at HGV movements on a number of the more minor roads, taking up the points you've raised about traffic coming from Dunstfold aerodrome and some of the impact potentially on some of the more minor roads. And we have actually commissioned a report so that we can actually be very clear on that impact as well. So we are aware of that. I know a number of you have already raised that with me in the planning special interest group, and that is happening. And in terms of the plan generally, well, the evidence at the moment hasn't indicated a severe impact, and councillor Adams will no doubt speak about that more, but at the moment, we are not, from the reports we've had from Surrey, from Macdonald, that have come in, from the, you know, the specialist consultants, we are not being told that there is sufficient evidence there that the impact is severe or will cause a health and safety issue. Now, that is very difficult for us as well, because unfortunately, what that means is that we do not have the amount of leverage which we as a borough would also love to have and would welcome to actually be able to go back and say, right, we need this work done, or that work, whatever. So it does actually limit us as well, but we recognise there are concerns, we are doing all we can within the limits of being the Borough Council to address those. And as I say, we are carrying on obviously with things like the various Macdonald reports, looking at some of the very particular areas that have been highlighted. There will be a schedule of amendments to the draft local plan, which, as an executive, we will be considering. And there will be some changes relating to air quality as well, and those will be referring both to the paragraphs relating to road safety, and secondly, the actual council's air quality action plan, and the way that we actually submit those annual reports to government. Now, what I will do is move to councillor Adams. Councillor Adams obviously has a lot more to say on the subject of the local plan. So councillor Adams, over to you.
Thank you, Leader. That was a comprehensive answer to the question on new homes bonuses.
Councillor Adams, I'm a politician. Right, back to the serious subject.
As most of you know, three years ago nearly, when I was offered this splendid portfolio, I had a hairstyle similar to the deputy leader's. So to progress through these things. Councillor Frost, thank you for all the work you've done on the ONS committee. That has been extremely valuable. A paper is available from the officers with all of the responses to that, and many of the points that you've raised have been added in to the latest version of the local plan. The infrastructure development plan, delivery plan, sorry, is here. It is a living document. The reason we've been reluctant to publish it to date is basically because it takes into account some applications which are still in pre-app. So when we know about them, we've actually looked into the delivery requirements, and they're on it, but I'd ask you to be discreet if you get, when you get this document and not read into it things that have not yet come before the planning committees. Yes, obviously, we're well aware of the volume of housing that is in Cranley. Of course, it's convenient for Cranley to lump together that with Dunstfold Park, which really is a separate and new development. Would we have chosen Dunstfold Park if we'd only had half the number of houses to deliver? Well, presumably not. The fact is that it's been made quite clear to us when the core strategy had to be withdrawn, that our primary duty was to fulfil our Office of National Statistics allocation of housing. Now, that is difficult in a borough like ours. We have really four different, very different major settlements, none of which really have put their hands up to volunteer and take all of the housing of one of the others, most of which have actually worked very closely with us to come to reasonable agreements. And that also applies actually to many of the villages, and I'd like to thank the parish councils for the cooperation and help that they've given in the development of this But the fact of the matter is, we as a council, in general terms, have decided that we don't actually wish to dramatically reduce the green belt, we don't wish to build significant new development in the AOMB or AGLV area, and that does fundamentally restrict where we can put these new homes. Farnham has worked very closely with us on their neighbourhood plan, and I would particularly like to thank councillor Coburn, who has been extremely helpful in, we've arrived at a consensus, more or less, with Farnham, it's very close to agreement, and I think their neighbourhood plan will be published fairly shortly. Godleming has, of course, now actually built a very large proportion of their requirement. You can look out of the window, you can see it all going up. So they have agreed though to the removal of two small, well, reluctantly agreed to the removal of two areas of green belt around Godleming, and there is the potential to build a bit more there. Hazelmeir has agreed, and a site is under development which is in the AOMB. Hazelmeir is severely restricted by green belt, but even so, there is quite a lot of development in the middle of Hazelmeir, in the settlement area, where they quite often take two or three houses where only one existed before. So everybody really is doing their best to come forward and accept the fact that we have to come up with roughly 900 and, sorry, 519 houses a year. It's absolutely true that we would have liked the highways authority to come back and say, sorry, no, this is unsustainable, this has, these developments have severe This has, these developments have severe impacts on the roads around. And no, we won't approve those area, those potential sites. But as the leader has already told you, they haven't done that. We are not the highway authority. Surrey is the highway authority. Even Highways England has not come back and said at the moment that what is being proposed with the A3 is unacceptable. So it's too, there are many reasons why we have come to the conclusions that we have. I don't think we can uh, mix up Dunstfold Park application with the str- uh, local plan. Uh, but this local plan is, I'm afraid, the best compromise that we can manage. Um, uh, the alternative, of course, is to leave it all to the inspectorate.
Councillor Adams, thank you. I think um, it's important that everyone understands that we are very mindful um, of the challenges that our members, but also, and more importantly, our residents face um, in various parts of the borough with this plan. And as councillor Adams said, the one thing that we need to make sure is that whilst we are being asked to make some very difficult choices at the moment, and believe me, they're not easy for, for any of us for a number of reasons, and some of the members have come here tonight to, to express their concerns. Um, the facts are that we need to have a sound, evidence-based local plan. And what we cannot risk is a plan that fails an inspection. And should that happen, we would then end up with the inspectorate basically telling us, telling our residents where things can be built, where homes will be built, and we would lose all control. And the fact is that we, as councillors, have a duty to ensure that we take control and we are back in the driving seat very firmly to ensure that as far as possible, we have appropriate development within the borough. It may be development that's not always popular, that's not always liked by residents, but we have to have a si- a status where we are back in the driving seat. And the fact is that at the moment, and with the feedback that we had when the inspector came and did his um, critical friend Mok inspection on this plan a few weeks ago, that is what we have with this plan. And it's absolutely imperative that we take control as members and as residents, and that we drive this plan and decide where we want our housing. And as councillor Adams said, it's not always going to be popular. Difficult choices have to be made, but we need to can, take control. Councillor Adams, thank you, because I know you've worked exceptionally hard for several years on, on this, along with the, all the officers as well, who I know have, have worked hard to get, get the plan to this stage. What is also important is that this plan, as recommended, will go before council next week. And if agreed at, at council, then obviously we um, will be ensuring that um, there is a time for, for review and for, for comments to come in on that plan. So at the moment, there is, there is still the opportunity, and will be the opportunity to comment, and it is a living, working document. And that is also important. We've still got comments and feedback to go in from the ONS committee, um, and a lot of their feedback. We've also got additional work, um, and working streams, um, also coming in from the planning special interest group. And I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank all the members of the planning special interest group, who are also um, helping with this. Uh, executive, any other comments that you'd like to make on this plan before you? Councillor Els.
Thank you, leader. Um, well, yes, as you've just said, um, we have to have a sound social plan. We must build new homes. And if we don't want to lose our control, we have to submit a local plan in a timely fashion. We have absolutely no choice whatsoever on that. So it's my understanding that in the main villages, certainly in my villages, uh, it is accepted that development is necessary. Yes, we need roads, and we need schools, and we need doctors, but it's, let us be quite clear. It's not, this authority isn't responsible for schools and roads and, and doctor surgeries. That is the work of other agencies. It's not our purpose. And so of necessity, we must be reliant on other agencies to work with us, to provide them. We cannot do their work, and we must play our part in the provision of new homes. And that part is the planning authority part, and that is what we are doing. I will be supporting this local plan.
Councillor Els, thank you. Um, councillor Dinas.
Thank you.
Thank you, leader. Um, a number of points have already been covered tonight, so I do apologise for a little bit of repetition. Um, tonight I find myself in quite a strange position. Being part of the executive, I've worked closely with my colleagues here tonight, helping shape the strategic direction of Waverley, and this has included the local plan. And I would like to congratulate councillor Adams and his team for the tremendous amount of work and commitment um, they've shown in getting the plan where it is today. My role as a borough councillor is to consider the wider needs of Waverley residents and businesses. But more importantly, it is to serve the community and represent their views as the elected representative. So therefore, I'd like to highlight the following. We are continuously reminded that the consultation in 2014 indicated an eighty percent level of support for housing to be at Dunstfold, but that was only a four percent of residents' response. That is a low response. And I have asked in this meeting and previous meetings a breakdown of how many residents from the Dunstfold, Allfold, Cranley area we supported these options, because those will be the families that are affected by any large development. And we've already heard tonight there's in excess of seventeen hundred letters of objection. And these show the high level of opposition, which doesn't appear to have been considered. The plan does allocate forty-five percent of the new homes to Cranley and the surrounding villages and Dunstfold Park. But I actually haven't seen the evidence that this is where housing is actually required. Road infrastructure is a concern, and it's been mentioned several times tonight. I accept there have been numerous strategic traffic assessments produced by Waverley, Surrey County Council, Dunstfold Park, and the parishes. Though the impact on the A281 are considered, I am disappointed that the impact on the smaller villages such as Allfold, Dunstfold, and Haskam, to name three, have been noted but not addressed. Where is the mitigation for these villages? I accept we're only discussing part one of the plan. But I am concerned that if the eastern part of the borough is to take forty-five percent of the additional housing, where is the plan to provide the infrastructure to make the eastern area, and in fact, Waverley as a whole, sustainable? Add the proposed large increases in business use, this just compounds the problem. Dunstfold is a main theme throughout the plan. I believe the roads will become gridlocked, and I'm not convinced that the infrastructure will go further than coping, let alone enhance a community. I acknowledge that a local plan has to be delivered, and that as a borough, housing needs to be delivered. I'm just not convinced that the infrastructure and roads across the borough can deliver this. This matter will be discussed at full council next week, where I will be representing the views from my ward. It'd be inconsistent for me to vote to support tonight, and then potentially vote differently at future, future meetings. So I'm currently minded to abstain. Thank you, leader.
Thank you, councillor Dinas. Um, councillor Martin.
Thank you. Um, we've heard a lot this evening from many members, and it is clear there are a lot of concerns and a lot of feelings. Essentially though, the critical aspect of this whole process is evidence. And this council has sought a considerable amount of evidence, traffic reports and housing consultations, to name just two. And the evidence at the moment supports the local plan set out in the agenda papers in front of us. There are tough decisions that need to be met, and it is our duty to make those. And as has already been said, if we do not put forward our own plan in the timescale set down by the government, then we will have one foisted upon us. I would rather be in control of my own destiny, rather than have bureaucrats in Whitehall decide it for me. So I will support the recommendations as set out before us.
Thank you, councillor Martin. I think you, again, have summed it up very well. Any other comments from the executive? In that case, we have three recommendations under item eight, on page five. Executive? Are those agreed?
Agreed.
Councillor Dinas?
Not yet.
Okay, that's noted. Thank you. Can we move to item nine, which is the Thames Basin Heath SPAR avoidance strategy? Before we start, if any other members wish to adjourn, that's absolutely fine. Right, moving to item nine, which is the Thames Basin Heath Avoidant, SPAR Avoidance Strategy. Councillor Adams, would you like to um, introduce that for us?
Thank you very much, leader. Uh, most members will be familiar with this because it was introduced um, in March for consultation. The consultation was completed in April, and there were twenty-three responses. They, uh, they are laid out with their answers on uh, page two sixty-seven to two seventy-five of the report. There are a number of changes that have been made to the initial report as a result of that consultation. Uh, in particular, there's uh, the addition of reference that, to developments over fifty dwellings between five kilometres and seven kilometres of the SPAR, because of their particular impact, extra impact on the SPAR. Um, further explain, explanation of the roles of SANG and the avoidance and SAM mitigation measures. There's been clarification and changes to the uh, capacity and the purposes of, of SANG and SAM tariffs. There's a reproduction of the SANG quality criteria in its entirety, and a reference to uh, SANG being funded in perpetuity. Um, those have all been added to the revised report, which is on pages two hundred and seventy-seven to two hundred and ninety-seven. Uh, there is one recommendation, leader.
Councillor Adams, thank you. Um, executive, any other comments? Thank you, councillor Adams. In that case, may I take it that, that recommendation, that one recommendation for item nine? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Let's move to item ten, which is the uh, Memorial Hall redevelopment in Farnham. And that can be found, that report, on pages two hundred and ninety-nine to three hundred and six. I think to, to, to give a summary of that, um, part of the tender process involved and looked at additional elements of work, um, which were identified. And one of the objectives was to actually identify future income generation, generating areas for the Memorial Hall. One such element was the additional work to the lower ground floor, and that's a space that would be perfect for offices. Now, there's been a lot of work um, with the architect and the design team, because this space has been identified as an ideal new home for Waverley Training Services. And Waverley Training Services are, are the apprenticeship training body of, of the council. And an additional seven hundred and twenty-four thousand pounds of funding has therefore, uh, needs to be allocated to undertake the additional internal uh, works, so that Waverley Training Services can be accommodated in what is currently unoccupied storage in the lower ground floor area. As I say, the council's been looking for some time to identify a far more suitable site for Waverley Training Services. Its current location, um, really is, is a, a very old um, building uh, in need itself of a, a great deal of investment. And with the growing demand that we have for in apprenticeships, um, and apprentices, it really does, and it is important that, that at this time, we invest in that and move forward with this recommendation to really improve and offer something for Waverley Training Services that is really fit for purpose for today and for the years ahead. The current home, which is the Pump House in Farnham, will be disposed of to generate the capital receipt to ensure that um, this is a, a, a balanced uh, budget uh, in the, in this element of the work. Now, colleagues, any of you from the executive who would like to speak on that? I know councillor Bolton's done a, a lot of work looking at this, as, as has councillor Els and councillor Dinas, with Waverley Training Services being your, your portfolio. So I can see you all keen to speak. Who would like to go first? Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, leader. You have, for me, regrettably, emphasised all the points that I had written out. But I would like to reiterate your final point about releasing funds from the disposal of the Pump House. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bolton. Um, councillor Dinas.
Yes, you have taken a few of my points, but never mind. Um, as you said, Waverley Training Services comes under my portfolio, and I recently visited the Pump House to have a look around. And I think your description, it's in a poor location. Um, there's no road for access, and parking is pretty difficult as well. And the building does require a certain amount of maintenance to keep it um, up to standard and fit for purpose, so we mustn't forget that point. I mean, they, they currently train a hundred apprentices who are work-based, and, and study program learners, which are classroom-based, and up to twenty-two learners. So it's really important to get the right sort of accommodation. Um, the staff are very supportive and excited about this potential opportunity, um, because they're looking forward to move into a building that's fit for purpose. So I am supportive of the proposals, but I will listen to any of my colleagues' views. Thank you.
Councillor Els, I'm sorry if I've said your piece as well. The problem is, I had, I had that portfolio for many years and was very keen to see them moved to a more appropriate site. So the excitement's overtaken me. Councillor Els.
No, you haven't stolen any of my material, because my particular interest in this um, matter is the um, is the Memorial Hall and what's going on um, behind the, the doors there. And I think that this will make huge sense, it really will. Because um, as well as being able to operate on the lower ground floor of the Memorial Hall, on the ground floor, uh, there's a great deal going on which can enhance um, their operation. It will provide a coffee bar for them, it will provide a, a social and recreational setting for them, and um, the Gostrey Centre, which is going in there, which is my particular interest, is for older people and people with um, mobility problems. But that's not the purpose of the Memorial Hall. The Memorial Hall is there to provide a, a very broad range of services to the whole of the community. So I think it's a very exciting prospect, and I really do welcome it. And I know that the Gostrey Centre are pleased to hear about the potential uh, of this, um, of, of this setup. So I'm very pleased. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Els. Yes, councillor Martin.
Uh, thank you. I, I think what we have here is essentially a win-win-win-win situation, really. Um, this is a win for Waverley Training Services, we get a new home. This is a win for the incoming Gostrey Centre group who have neighbours and added users of any cafe. Uh, it's, it's a win for us because we get better use of our assets, um, with increased tenants um, within, uh, within the Memorial Hall itself. Um, and I think it's a win for the people of Waverley, um, who have a, a better home for- a better home for many different groups, which are well valued in the local community. So I wholeheartedly support this recommendation.
Councillor Martin, thank you. Councillor King?
Somebody's left me something to say, which is quite nice. Having held various portfolios over the time, I'm really, really pleased to see this work coming together. But what really excites me and pleases me about it is the opportunity for intergenerational co-mingling on one site. I think we've been too quick in the past, because of circumstances and one thing and another, where we've had all our young people isolated in one place, and our older generation in another. And I think it's absolutely super to think of the two being in the same location, and I'm sure they'll all enjoy each other's company.
Yes, I think in summary, it really is a great example of even more exciting, diverse usage of that hall. And I'm very pleased that this is coming before us this evening. So colleagues, there are actually four recommendations under that item. Can I take it that they are agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving on to item eleven, which is the in-depth review of the Meals on Wheels service. Councillor Els and councillor Bolton, I'm not sure in which order it's being taken, but... Councillor Els?
Thank you. So this report sets out the findings of the Community Overview and Scrutiny Meals on Wheels Committee, and the proposals for the development of a future community meal delivery and visiting service. So the number of people taking up the current frozen reheat service has steadily decreased over the last five years. And whilst it is a discretionary service, supporting a meal delivery and visiting service for Waverley residents is high on the list of corporate priorities, as it helps to promote and support health and wellbeing amongst our less able, vulnerable residents. It contributes hugely to the ability for people to remain independent and in their own homes. It was clear throughout the review that apart from the nutritional aspect, for many of the clients, the social contact of the element of the visit, sorry, the social contact element of the visit was vitally important. Social isolation is a huge component in health deterioration. So it's therefore proposed that discussions take place to develop an alternative replacement freshly cooked meal service, prepared by some or all of the five major day centres in Waverley. The intention is that the new service is delivered within the council's thirty thousand pound annual grant. In addition, the service would work with the current group of Royal Voluntary Service volunteers for meal delivery and social contact. The aim is that following the result of these discussions, a new service is up and running by the first of January two thousand and seventeen. And I'd just like to offer my thanks to the members of the ONS Review Committee, to the officers for their support throughout, and for this very, I think, well-written and concise report. Thanks also go to the many volunteers who have provided this invaluable service in its present form over many years, and who have indicated that they will help us to take the new service forward. We are of course grateful to the RVS for their continuing input. And it's also important to recognise the day centres' early interest and enthusiasm for the proposed model of delivery, with all the possibilities which will stem from that for them. And all recommendations are on page seven. I thoroughly recommend them to be recommended.
Councillor Els, thank you. I think councillor Bolton, you indicated you wanted to speak, and then councillor King?
Thank you leader. It was just to make a point that in any future discussions, can we be clear that meals are available and delivered every day of the year, or certainly every working day of the year?
Yes, councillor Els, did you want to come back on that?
Well, yes. I think that is a detail which will of course be covered in the future work that we will do if this gets approval. People who need a meal provided at the weekend and on Christmas Day, for example, will be the kind of people who have a support package from social services, in which case there will be contact for them from the professional carers over the weekend and on bank holidays. And so therefore, a meal provision is perfectly feasible for them to be receiving. But that is a detail that will be worked on if we get the recommendation passed.
Thank you. And councillor King?
Thank you very much leader. I'm really excited to see this report, and it's well, well overdue, in my personal opinion. How, I still fail to understand how a frozen meal that's reheated in Farnham and gets delivered to the far reaches of Cranley, Godriming, Hazlemead or wherever else, can be at all appetising. I think locally fresh cooked food delivered from the day centres is an absolutely spot-on way of tackling it. It also will give the day centres, certainly my own at the Orchard Club in Hazlemead, the opportunity to expand their outreach service to some of the more hard-to-reach residents, and I think that is really important. I know that the centre manager has expressed her excitement and her wish to get on with this. I totally support this. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I'd like to take this opportunity to thank, again, everyone involved in this, because it's been a review that has caused some concern, and it's good that we've managed with the hard work involved by officers, councillors and the other agencies, we've been able to move this forward quickly, so that people know that there is a solution in place, a very good proposal that's been put forward, which again means that, you know, we can now move this on and really make sure we get this up and running. Thank you. So councillor Adams, are you indicating you wish to speak?
Yes, thank you leader. I just would like to ask the team looking into this if they would consider, if they can find any use for the facilities provided by the day centre in Parkhurst Fields Chut. That has its own kitchen, it cooks meals, and I wonder if they might find that that could make a contribution.
We'll ensure it's noted. Thank you very much councillor. Colleagues, moving to the recommendations. So you've got one, two, three recommendations before you. Are those agreed? We move to item twelve, which is the performance management report for quarter four of two thousand and fifteen sixteen. So that's January to March of this year. And just really in summary, before we go to the recommendation, the report on that runs from page three hundred and fifteen to three hundred and thirty-six of your agenda, and gives an analysis of the council's performance in the fourth quarter. The indicators of which targets can be set, sixty-two percent are green, meaning that they're on target or better, twenty-two percent are amber, meaning that they are five percent off target, and sixteen percent are red, meaning that they are more than five percent off target. There are detailed comments on performance which are provided both within the covering report and in the accompanying annex one. So just in summary, the overall profile is relatively positive. However, there do still remain areas that performance is below target. I'm very pleased to see that in some cases, for example, the average number of working days taken to re-let. Whilst we are still red on performance, we are on a clear trajectory towards meeting our performance indicator. Where our performance profile shows performance more stubbornly remaining red, for example on the number of planning appeals allowed, I'm very grateful to the officers and members who I know are working very hard to tackle this. There are therefore two recommendations which you will see on your agenda, and I commend these to you. Colleagues, any comments, or are these recommendations agreed? Thank you. Can we move to item thirteen, which is the service plans for the year outturn So if you move to pages three three seven to three eighty of your agenda, it is a very meaty agenda this evening, so hopefully you can find all these parts to the report. It identifies really the extent to which the commitments made within the council's service plan have been successfully delivered. The tables that begin on page three hundred and forty-one provide a red, amber or green rating for all the council's service plans. And I think that you'll agree with me, that it's really pleasing to see that a substantial amount of actions are rated green. However, we do need to recognise that unfortunately there are a handful of actions that remain rated either red or amber. And the table beginning on page three hundred and thirty-eight provides you with a detailed commentary on these. Now, there were no comments or observations from the Community Overview and Scrutiny Committee, and there was no Corporate Overview and Scrutiny Committee meeting in this cycle to review the service plan outturn report. There is one recommendation which you'll see on page three hundred and forty, which relates to this, and I commend that to you. Colleagues, any queries or questions, or can I take it that that item is agreed? Thank you. Moving to item fourteen, which is the Report of the Constitution SIG, you will see that on pages three hundred and eighty-one to three hundred and eighty-eight. And basically, this paper just summarises the real areas of work that the Constitution SIG looked at during its first meeting, and the proposed recommendations to the council for taking some of the changes forward. Now, these key changes were, and included, amending the scheme of delegation, so that any councillor within the remit of an area planning committee can call in a planning application to either the area or the joint planning committee, and not just the ward councillor. The special interest group also reviewed the part of the constitution that sets out procedures for members of the public asking questions at meetings of the council. The proposal is that the council replaces the informal question time with a more comprehensive arrangement for the submission of formal questions. This would offer members of the public slightly longer to submit their questions, and also guarantee that they receive a comprehensive answer. The amendments to the constitution that are necessary are attached in the report, and you will see that there are three recommendations before you on page eight of your agenda. Any comments, colleagues? In that case, can I ask if those points, those three recommendations, are they agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. So we move to item fifteen, which involves the overview and scrutiny committees again, and that relates to the officer support and the options analysis following that. You will see there's a report which is on pages three hundred and eighty-nine to three hundred and ninety-four of your agenda. So in June, the executive received and endorsed the findings that came from the Joint Overview and Scrutiny Committee's review panel, which was held at Waverley. And alongside training and a number of other recommendations for change that came forward as a result of that panel's very in-depth review into the scrutiny process at Waverley, executive members asked for options in response to the desire for a dedicated scrutiny resource. Now, the report sets out three options, which are option one, which is no change, option two, which is to reallocate workloads within the existing democratic services structure, so that an existing grade seven democratic services officer has responsibility for servicing all scrutiny committees, or to move to option three, which is to create a new grade seven scrutiny officer post within the council's corporate policy team. Options one and two are put forward at no cost, but for this reason, offer much less impact than option three, which offers more impact but recognises that there is an increased staffing cost. The report also sets out a number of options that have been considered, but which for the reasons noted have been discounted. Therefore, the recommendation before you is for option three, a new scrutiny officer post within the council's corporate policy team. Now whilst I'm very mindful of the resources implications of this, I see this as the best way forward. I've also taken on board the comments from the chairman and the other members of the scrutiny panel, and talking also to other members at other neighbouring boroughs and districts, again, looked at their views and seen how they work. And I do feel that whilst, as I say, we have to recognise that there is a constant implication, this is the best way forward to ensure that we have appropriate scrutiny here at Waverley. And there are therefore two recommendations before you under this item. Thank you. Members, anyone would like to comment? Councillor Els?
Thank you leader. Yes, I was actually on this committee before I came to the executive, and so I worked on it quite hard for quite a number of months. And I would say that if we really, really do want change in regard to our overview and scrutiny procedures and culture, I think we must go with this recommendation. I also have spoken to other authorities, those who don't have a dedicated scrutiny officer, and those who do. And the outcome of conversations that I've had appears to me that overview and scrutiny is best served if you have a dedicated scrutiny officer. Hence, I will be thoroughly supporting this recommendation.
Councillor Els, thank you. I have councillor Martin, then councillor Edwards.
Thank you. I think it has to be acknowledged, the considerable work that has been put into this review. And one of the key recommendations was for a dedicated scrutiny officer. And I think if, we shouldn't just be paying lip service to this review. And if we are to take it seriously, then this sort of recommendation needs to be put through. I'm thoroughly in support of option three, as is in our papers, that the only way to really do this justice is to have a dedicated person. It's not about sharing workloads and spreading it around or doing nothing at all. So this has my full support.
Councillor Martin, thank you. Councillor Edwards?
Thank you leader. I'd like to confirm what everybody else has already said on this matter. I too was a member of the review panel, and I think it would be of great benefit to the council as a whole, and in particular to the backbench members, in sending a signal to them, saying, look, we're embracing what you've told us. We are going to change the way we do things. And this is just the start. And I think I thoroughly recommend this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Edwards. I think we're all agreed that we have a good process that is in place at the moment, but we need to make sure that we continually review it. It hadn't been reviewed for a number of years. And times change, and the challenges coming before us as members change, and the challenges coming before officers also change. And now is the time for this process to change, and for us to have a dedicated scrutiny officer. There are two recommendations before you, members, this evening. Are those agreed? Thank you. And moving to items- And moving to item 16, which is the recruitment of an IT support analyst. Councillor Martin.
Well, essentially, this is actually approval for point two of an IT support analyst. By a sort of quirk of staffing, we've had a recent retirement whose position was essentially four days a week, doing two days from one budget and two days from another. It's very difficult to replace that sort of arrangement, so the plan is to have a full-time IT support analyst to join the team. But in order for us to do that, even within existing budgets, we need permission for naught point two of an additional IT member. And I put the recommendation in your papers before you, I thoroughly commend it.
Thank you, councillor Martin. Colleagues, are we agreed on that?
Agreed.
Thank you. Moving to item 17, and that's the Bagshot Lee Recreation Ground, an approval to submit a planning application. Councillor Dinas, I believe this is your area.
It is, and I promise to be very brief. With the advent of 2020 cricket, better bats and better cricketers, they're hitting more boundaries. Boundaries vary from 45 to 65 metres, and it's quite common for the balls to go flying into people's gardens or into their cars. So installing a net mitigates health and safety issues, and is the most cost-effective solution. This request is to submit a planning application to erect a ball-stopping net. It will be 10 metres high and can be lowered, we're not in use to reduce any visual impact. So there's only one recommendation on page 399 and page nine of the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dinas. Colleagues, any comments, or are we agreed on that one recommendation?
Agreed.
Councillor Adams.
I'd just like to thank councillor Dinas for putting forward this recommendation, as it will save the, I think, the new homes being built the other side of the nets. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Dinas. Moving to item 18, which is the intention to appropriate land at Bourne Recreation Ground in Farnham. Colleagues, you'll see that report on pages 401 to 410. Can we just, for clarity's sake, change the portfolio holder? I'll cover this off, Mrs McQuillan, but it will be councillor Dinas. I'm conscious that this is a piece of work that's gone on for several years, I think I first became involved back in something like 2013, quite several years ago, anyway. And basically, in summary, the council owns the Bourne Recreation Ground, and a local benefactor wishes to donate a significant sum of money to enable the redevelopment of the pavilion and the associated leisure facilities. Now, the local community have set up a local community group to provide the new pavilion and leisure facilities, and they will also take responsibility for the redevelopment of the pavilion. And some of you may have been on the planning committee, I'm not sure, it was back in February earlier this year, that planning permission for the demolition of the existing pavilion and the erection of the new building was actually granted. So the council needs to now grant the community group a long lease in order for the group to undertake the works required and to manage the pavilion, and this will be dealt with in a later executive report. The current pavilion's in a very poor state of repair, so investment and so forth is needed. And clearly, if Waverley were to have to take responsibility, it would cause a severe financial impact on Waverley. So the recreation ground has special status as what's called a village green. The council has taken councillor's advice in order to determine that the most appropriate way of proceeding to enable the development to happen is to appropriate the land for planning purposes. So the council would therefore advertise its intention to appropriate the land in order to invite any representations regarding this to happen, and any representations will then be considered by the council before moving on to the next stage in the project. At this point, there are two recommendations before you, which you can find on page 10 of your agenda. So can I ask, are those agreed?
Agreed.
Good. Thank you. Moving to item 19, which is a property matter, councillor Dinas and Martin, and that relates to Farnham Town Football Club.
Okay, again, I'll be brief. Farnham Football Club currently occupies the memorial ground under terms of a lease which expires in 2023. The plan is to invest in their facilities, and this will include them surrendering the use of their current changing rooms and constructing new ones adjacent to the clubhouse. In order to meet Sport England and FA grants criteria, there's requirement to be in possession of a full 25-year lease. So there's one recommendation, which is to surrender the lease and to renegotiate a new 25-year lease, which can be found on page 412 of the papers and page 10 of the agenda. Thank you, leader.
Thank you, councillor Dinas. Part of this is an exempt, I don't propose to go into exempt unless anyone wishes to talk to the item in further detail, but can I take it that you're agreed on the recommendation before you?
Agreed.
Thank you. Can we move, therefore, to item 20, which is executive director's actions? Mr Wenham.
No action some of this category this month, leader.
Thank you. And there are no exclusions of the press and public at this stage, and there are no other issues to be covered in exempt, are there? Therefore, I will close this meeting, but can I ask you to remain seated, because we have another which we will start immediately afterwards? So, thank you. Colleagues, we now open our next meeting, and that is a meeting of the executive, and we are meeting as the executive acting as trustees of the Joseph Ewett Bequest. Mrs McQuillan, apologies for absence.
Apologies from councillor Hall.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest?
None received, leader.
Thank you. Can I, therefore, on this item, given that it is an item that's in exempt, we will, I'm afraid, need to exclude the press and public. Therefore, the recommendation, colleagues, is that pursuant to procedural rule 20 and in accordance with section 100a (for) of the Local Government Act 1972, that the press and public be excluded from the meeting during consideration of the following item on the grounds that it is likely, in view of the nature of the business to be transacted or the nature of the proceedings, that if members of the public were present during this item, there would be disclosure to them of exempt information, open brackets, as defined by section 1001 of the Act, close brackets.